Welcome to the regular, regularly scheduled meeting of the Southern County Board of Education. Please stand. Thank you all and welcome. It's always good to see a big crowd. Always good to have here today a lot of stuff to celebrate. So thank you all for coming. With that, needs to approve the agenda. Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is to approve the agenda.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that, I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Usleton, your superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excited to have so many people here in attendance today. We've got a lot of, a lot of great things going on. We'll be looking forward to it. Before we get started, I do have one item that I would like to ask the board to please consider an executive session. That is a potential litigation matter. If we can consider that, I would appreciate it. Also, next week, it'd be good for everybody here to know this, but next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And we always want to thank our teachers and our teacher assistants for all of their hard work. And we recognize them. I know we've got a lot of activities planned next week. And if anybody has a chance and want to thank teachers next week, I know that they'll appreciate it. We need to be thanking them every week, our teachers and teacher assistants, the fabulous job that they do. All right, we have got, like I said, several, several great things that we've got going on today. But we're going to start out today, we are going to be recognizing some of our principals and schools from the elementary level. And I'll ask Ms. Chidi Tradeway and Ms. Christy Dunne, and that's our Director of Primary Schools and Intermediate Schools, to come forward, one at a time or both. How are y'all going to do that? I'll come down and join.
Well, it's my honor today to recognize some schools that have shown tremendous, the top growth and achievement for the state for 2024. So I'm going to start with the top 10% of growth for all Mississippi schools. Hernando Elementary. Another top 10 ELA growth award goes to Hernando Hills Elementary. And next, we have top 10 ELA growth and top 10 math, Lewisburg Elementary School. And last but not least, another top 10 ELA growth and top 10% math growth award goes to Lewisburg Primary School. I get the honor of announcing the preps awards for our intermediate schools. The preps achievement award is for the scale score increase that is twice that of the state's average. So that's amazing. And then the top 10% of growth. So there will be two different categories. All right, first, Ms. Christy Hale from Center Hill Elementary, fourth grade math achievement award. Next, we have Annalaura Parker from Horn Lake Intermediate School with third grade achievement award. Up next, we have Ms. Stacy Pearl from Oak Grove Central Elementary School. She gets the fourth grade ELA achievement award. Next, we have Ms. Ashley Taggart from Olive Branch Intermediate, fourth grade math achievement award. We have April Rucker from South Haven Intermediate School with fifth grade ELA achievement. Then Erica Armstrong from Wallace Elementary School is third grade ELA achievement award. Lisa Duke from DeSoto Central Elementary School. She has the fourth grade math achievement award and fifth grade ELA achievement award. Nathan Hickerson from Lake Corrin Elementary School, fourth grade ELA achievement award and fourth grade math achievement award. Helen Wright, Over Park Elementary, fourth grade ELA achievement award and fourth grade math achievement award. Leanna Clark, South Haven Elementary School's fourth grade math achievement and fifth grade ELA. And then we have Michelle Corbin from Lewisburg Intermediate, fourth grade ELA achievement award, fourth grade math achievement award, top 10 ELA growth award and top 10 math growth award. Let's allow them to recognize this academic achievement.
Great.
If I could get our principals to come up, we'll get a picture. Congratulations. Mr. Adam Sykes will be coming forward at this time. Principal of South Haven High School will be recognizing a state champion today.
Thank you, Ms. Usleton, our school board. Thank you all for letting us recognize our scholar athletes. Ms. Taylor Smith, I had the opportunity to introduce y'all last year to her because she won the state in powerlifting as a junior, and now she is also done again her senior year. So I'm going to let her coach Oliver Sizemore come up there to introduce her. Okay, yeah, so we are here for Taylor. Taylor ended up back-to-back state champion, broke the state squad record all time across every division, and was also a member of the Elite 12. So I guess Taylor, come on up.
Next up, we have Mr. Jason Witt, Principal of Center Hill High School. Will be recognizing more state champions.
Thank you, Ms. Usleton. Thank you, school board. Always love coming here and recognizing our incredible Mustang student athletes. First up, Jasmine Stapleton. Jasmine actually broke the state record by deadlifting 300 pounds. Next up, Cambry Oldshawn. And last but not least, this young man squatted over 700 pounds. Just in case you're curious, a couple of things that weigh 700 pounds. Let's see, a Harley Davidson motorcycle, a vending machine, and adult Grizzly bears. Powerlifting state champion Elijah Westbrook.
Let's get a photo. Right. And next up, we've been recognized with our seniors who scored 30 or higher on the ACT this entire semester. And today's our last board meeting where we'll be recognizing 30-plus ACT. We've got Fernando High School here as Principal Dwayne Kast.
Thank you, Mr. Usleton. Thank you, board members. We're excited to have 34 students that have 30-plus on their ACT. This time of year, it's hard to catch all your seniors. I did have about 65 of them show up in my house at 5:00 this morning. It was a senior prank day. So when I walked out, luckily I was dressed. They were laying in, lying in my living room. So some of them were there this morning and they're here today. Some of them may have gone back to death. But we're excited to announce them. Lauren Allen. Tanner Applegate. Madison Arnold. Jacob Bearden. Alvin Chin. Connor Couch. Connor was also accepted into the Naval Academy. Addison Delo. Kennedy Dennison. Reed Japen. Lillian Graves. Sophia Hendricks. Isaac Howard. Logan Jameson. Kristen Jones. Kennedy Judd. Kicker. Addison Kramer. Garrett Liston. Joseph Louder. Elizabeth Mahoney. Sophia Maskey. Jack McHale. Kayden McElhaney. Owen McGregor. Cage Ostrander. Alyssa Rainey. Landon Robertson. Heidi Rogers. Kaylee Smith. Natalie Tillo. Nicholas Crigg. Riley Whitehead. And Olivia Young.
I could take up the whole stage, but I want to try to get a group photo. It's a good problem to have to, to like come up. We'll use the stage. Let's give all of our student athletes and students a big round of applause. Students, we're not done. We're not done. Be done in a second. On behalf of our board members, I want to thank our parents, your family members who are in attendance today. We appreciate your support of schools and want to congratulate our student athletes again, our seniors and our underclassmen also. Job well done there. Seniors will look forward to seeing you on stage here in just a few weeks. Graduation. So now, now would be a good time to go. We all wanted to congratulate y'all one more time.
Right. That does not conclude my superintendent's report, though. We had a lot, a lot of great things going on. But we also have one more great thing today. Always great when we can hear from Ms. Juana Williams, our Director of Mental Health Services. She does such an outstanding job. The reason we're wearing green today, I know you're going to explain that. I saw even a lot of the students were wearing green today.
Somebody got the memo. So today, we recognize national children's mental health awareness. I want to thank all of you today for supporting us by wearing green. You look fabulous. And supporting student mental health. So DCS continues to be the standard in academics, and the Mental Health Department is no different. We continue to be the standard across the state in providing school-based mental health services to students and staff. And it is because of you, our board, and our superintendent, Mr. Usleton, that our district is able to promote a culture of wellness. I want to share with you today a year in review of how the Mental Health Department has been a liaison between the school and the community in creating and increasing mental health awareness and resources. So we started our year off in Olive Branch. We kicked off our, and Center Hill together, combined this year. We kicked off our event, and we have Mental Health Awareness Night in conjunction. And as you can see, Ms. Usleton is there to start our year off. We did that at the Open House in August. There you see all of our mental health providers, as well as all of our school counselors that represent that district, and some of the other mental health providers that came out, and the parents that enjoyed that event. So here we have Hernando and Lewisburg, and they combined the event as well this year. So it was hosted at Hernando High School in September. So this is more than just a mental health event for us, a Mental Health Awareness Night. This has really become a community event. We have businesses and local community organizations that are there. This year, we even had DeSoto Arts Council to participate. So we're really excited about all that we're doing in Hernando. Next, we had South Haven. This was really one of the most successful nights in South Haven. It was held at, in April, at South Haven Intermediate School. And that, as you can see, we had students to participate as well as parents. So here we have Horn Lake, and this was hosted this year. Horn Lake hosted at Horn Lake High School. And as you can see, our students and our parents left with bags of resources that they could give out to their parents and things that they, they were able to really have a lot of communication with mental health providers. So here, Lake Corrin had a theme in February, and it was Healing Hearts and Minds. And as you can see, they had all of their hearts. This was, they hosted the event at Lake Corrin Elementary, and it was in conjunction with their sneaker ball. So they really had a good time that night. And here, this is one of our biggest events. We actually have thousands of parents that show up every year at DeSoto Central High School. So not only do they leave, this is our trunk and tree, not only do they leave with a handful of candy, but also a lot of resources around mental health. Our students are very involved, especially our DeSoto Central High School students. They, they participate in a lot of the clubs, put on a lot of the mental health events there. So every year, we take a pulse of the district, really looking and seeing how we can support our students. This past year, we had a lot of students that lost a lot of parents, and we had a lot of students dealing with grieving issues. So we brought in a national speaker. And of course, Mr. Usleton is always there to support us. This was at Hernando, I mean, at Horn Lake High School. We brought in Genevieve Nelson, and she really worked with our counselors in understanding how to support our students. We always do this professional development during School Counselor Appreciation Week. And as you can see, our school counselors are holding up signs. This year, they talked about that all students needed school counselors that could help them. And one of our counselors wrote, "Help them feel safe, help them feel a sense of belonging, and help them know that they are always loved." This was a really, really great event. So we know that we're doing really great things here in DeSoto. And Ole Miss, which is one of our partners, asked us to come up and not only talk to the new principal corps, but to talk to future counselors, future mental health providers, and really talk to them about what we were doing in DeSoto. Ms. Samples had the opportunity- Ms. Samples had the opportunity to come up, and, and we talked to them not about only what we're doing, but about the future of mental health and education, and how we could all partner together to meet the needs of students. So this was a great day for us. And here, this is, one of the things that we talked about this year in our Mental Health Advisory Council is really getting into our community. We know that we can do a lot of things in our school system, but really having the community behind us is important. So as you can see, we spent a day at Bryan Baptist Church this year. We did that during suicide awareness. We also presented to Northwest Church of Christ. There, we talked about trauma, and we really gave a lot of information to the parishioners there. This year, we also partnered with our federal programs, and we did Parent and Family Engagement Night. And as always, we started working with our new teachers and New Teacher Academy. And I had the opportunity this year also during spring break to continue to work on mental health. And I went to the Ohio State University to an evidence-based school counseling conference where I met and partnered with a lot of people from other states, and I'll be bringing some of that back here. And this is the A-Team. And we call ourselves the A-Team because I could not do anything that we're doing, and we could not serve students the way that we are without the help of everyone here that you see. There are more A-Team members that were not present that day, but I give all credit to them for the help. This year, we've served over 1,100 students. We have 14 licensed clinicians. We have a district social worker and an interventionist. We also partnered with a parent institute. It's called the Cook Convention Center. We really partnered, giving parents information and encouragement on how to deal with life challenges, especially when dealing with students with mental health issues. This has been a wonderful program for us, and so we're really excited about that. And here is our mental health department. These are our 14 clinicians, our district social worker, as well as our interventionist. I want to thank all of you, especially the board. We are doing amazing things in DeSoto. And a lot of, a lot of other districts have called and asked about what we're doing. We're also helping them set up mental health programs, and none of that would be possible without your support. And I thank you for that. Thank
Great presentation. We appreciate all of your hard work and your team's hard work. Hard to believe, seven years ago, when we started this program, and we were ahead of the curve the rest of the state. A lot of people are calling Ms. Williams and want to duplicate many of the things we're doing here at the Settler County Schools. We appreciate all that you do for our employees and our students and everyone involved. Great presentation. Thank you. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Keith, do we have an attorney's report?
Oh, we do not.
Great. Thank you. Approval of the minutes from our April 17th board meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Before we approve the consent agenda, as I do every, every meeting, again, I want to thank the elder on her 29th birthday, first of all. But thank you for putting this together, as well as all the administrative staff that gives us the ability to really look at the information, ask questions, get answers back, so that we're most informed. That said, consent agenda today is 838A8. Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. New business. Mr. Williams, HVAC replacement project for Olive Branch Middle School?
Yes, sir. We had open CO bid on April 8th. Olive Branch Middle School HVAC replacement project. Four bids were received, and it is my recommendation, except for those, in the best bid from May General and Mechanical LLC.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the lowest invest bid for the HVAC replacement project at Olive Branch Middle School. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, contractual agreement with May General and Mechanical LLC for Olive Branch Middle School?
Yes, sir. We're requesting permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with May General and Mechanical LLC for the Olive Branch Middle School HVAC replacement project.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with May General and Mechanical for the HVAC replacement project at Olive Branch Middle School. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Williams. You're going out with a bang, aren't you?
I am.
That's what I thought.
Is that comedy?
Yeah, probably. Revised Board Policy, IDGFA, Students with Disabilities?
Yes, sir. We're asking to revise this policy, only to clean up some language within the policy.
Mr. Usleton, your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised Board Policy, IDGFA, Students with Disabilities. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Revised Board Policy, IDGFD, IDEA Supplement Services Policy?
Yes, sir. We're asking to revise this policy to update the definition of supplemental services.
Hearing that, Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised Board Policy, IDGFD, IDEA Supplemental Services Policy. Top of that suit.
Yeah.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes. Revised Board Policy, IHAA, Policy Statement on Grading for Students with Disabilities?
Yes, sir. We're asking to revise this policy to add the Mississippi alternate diploma option.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised Board Policy, IHAA, Policy Statement on Grading for Students with Disabilities. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Revised Board Policy, IHFA, Special Education Graduation, Vocational Diploma?
Yes, sir. We are asking to revise this policy, again, to add the Mississippi alternate diploma option.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to go through the revised Board Policy, IHFA, for Special Education Graduation, Vocational Diploma. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Revised Board Policy, IN, Vocational Career Technical Education?
We're asking to revise this policy, only to clean up language within the policy.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised Board Policy, IN, for Vocational Career Technical Education. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Revised Board Policy, IMVA, Career Technology Center Placement Process?
Yes, we're asking to revise this policy to update language within the policy and update grade level requirements for admission into the program.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised Board Policy, IMVA, Career Technology Center Placement Process. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Pass.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. And Revised Board Policy, JNB, Seal of Bi Literacy?
We're asking to revise this policy to add the requirements needed for a student to receive a Global Seal of Bi Literacy.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the revised Board Policy, JNB, for Seal of Bi Literacy. Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Usleton. I feel like some words out in there.
No.
So, Mark, you're the second thinking. It was tough, huh?
Mr. Alexander, personally, I just want to do five recommendations. Age 69 are personnel changes. Age 10 is a memo from myself to district approved. I had a part-time hearing officer for the 2526 school year. Age 11 is a memo from Mr. Jerry White, Director of Plank Maintenance, in quest to approve a new part-time maintenance position where no more than 19 and a half hours per week can be paid for the existing maintenance scale. Age 12 is a memo from the Stripling Chief Academic Officer, in quest to approve a stipend in the amount of $100 to newly hired teachers who attend new teacher content trainees, those of academic services, of Leon 717 and then 724. Age 13 is a memo from Ms. Goss, Director of Special Education, in quest to provide $100 stipend for new SLEs and SAs to attend training on 723. Age 14 is a memo from Ms. Tredway, Director of Primary Schools, to approve two additional dyslexia therapist units. Age 15 through 18 is a memo from the Stripling, on request to add ready-to-learn coaches to follow schools, Pleasant Hill, Over Park, Wallace, Lake Concord Elementary, South End Elementary, and Centerville Elementary. The revised job description is attached. Age 19 through 22 is a memo and job description from Ms. Tredway, on request to add an additional specialist to serve and support primary grades. Ages 23 through 25 is a 25, 26 through year principal supplements. Ages 26 through 36 is a 25 to 26 licensed salary scales. Age 37 through 39 is a data customer support job description. Age 40 through 42 is a high school academic specialist job description. Ages 43 through 46 is an MDE educator and residency, residence literacy coach job description. Ages 47 and 48 is request additional pay from Ms. Goss, who has paid employees to work ESY. Age 49 through 52 is request additional pay from Mr. White, Director of Plank Maintenance, on the following employees who will work as summer painters, a total of 287 hours, $13 per hour, beginning 529 and ending in 725. Age 53 and 54 is a request additional pay from Mr. White, on employees at Mill School Athletic Fields during June and July, $500 per month and $1,000 per school. Age 55, 56 request additional pay from Mr. White, employees at High School Field, same competition. Age 57 is request additional pay from Ms. Baker, our Director of HR, in quest for a summer worker, 40 hours a week, beginning 529 and ending 725. Age 58 through 60 is request additional pay from Paul Preston, Director of Security and Risk Management, on employees who will work a six-week remediation program. They'll be paid at their daily rate, and that will be from 529 through 711. Age 61 is a request additional pay from Ms. Green, Director of Ence, on the following employees to train. As a new Ence clerk, she'll work a total of 80 hours with SIS at her hourly rate of pay. Age 62 through 63 is request additional pay from Sarah Jane Russell, Director of Interventions, on employees who will work A8 Intervention Summer Committee, beginning 62 and ending 630, $30 per hour. Request additional pay from Ms. Dunne, Director of Intermediate Schools, on employees who will work on the 3rd through 5th grade math summer committee, beginning 62 and ending in 630, $30 per hour. Age 60, 60, 67, request from Ms. Dunne, the following employees to work 35 ELA Summer Committee from 62, 630 at that rate. 68, 69, request additional pay from Ms. Tredway, employees who will work the pre-K Summer Committee, beginning 62 and ending 630 at that rate. Age 70 and 71 is request additional pay from Ms. Tredway, on the following employees who will work the M and the K2 Math Summer Committee, beginning 62 and ending 630. Ages 72, 73 is request additional pay from Ms. Tredway, on employees who will work the K2 ELA Summer Committee, beginning 62 and ends on 630. Age 74 through 79 is request additional pay from Ms. Tredway, and employees who will work to attend the pre-K boot camp training session, that will begin 515 and end on 613. They'll be paid at their hourly rate. Ages 80 and 81 is request additional pay from the Stripling, employees who will work the middle school summer committee, and that will begin 62 and end on 630. Age 82, 83 is request additional pay from the Stripling, on employees who will work the middle school ELA Summer Committee, that will begin 62 and end on 630. Ages 84 and 85 request additional pay from the Stripling, on employees who will work the middle school summer textbook committee, beginning 62 and ending 630. Ages 86 and 87 request additional pay from the Stripling, on employees who will work the middle school math summer committee for resource, and that will begin 62 and end 630. Ages 88 and 89 is request additional pay from Ms. Hasselman, Assistant Superintendent, on employees who will work the high school math summer committee, beginning 62 and ending 630. Page 90 and 91 is request additional pay from Ms. Hasselman, employees who will work the high school ELA Summer Committee, beginning 62 and ending 630. And pages 92 and 93 is request from Ms. Hasselman, employees who will work the AP Summer Committee, same date. Page 94, 95 is request from Ms. Hasselman, employees who work the high school biology, those same dates. Ages 96 and 97 is request additional pay from Ms. Hasselman, employees who work the high school ACT Summer Committee, those dates. And then page 98 is request additional pay from Ms. Hasselman, employees who work the high school US History Summer Committee, those dates. And then page 99 is the 2025, 2026 new principal recommendations. I didn't stop there. Had that approved.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes.
Page 100 is the 25, 26 new principal recommendation.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Finley, do we have any student discipline matters to discuss in executive session? As a board, we welcome public participation at our board meetings. While this is not a debate setting nor a question-and-answer session, we reserve this time at our regular board meetings for public comment, and for citizens who have requested to appear. Board policy allows 30 minutes for public comment. Public comment involving student matters or personnel matters must be heard word at a time in executive session. Each person who wishes to comment will have up to five minutes to speak until the 30-minute time limit is reached. When asked for public comment, please state your name, and if you have a student or personnel matter, please state that information as well. Do we have anyone that wishes to Thank you all. We do have two requests to appear. HB, are you here? Brown, thank you. ST, are you here? Todd? Before we take consideration for its end of session, Mr. Usleton?
Great. Thank you. I have a superintendent's report 2.0 today, and so we'll get to part two. First of all, I want to thank the board for approving the personnel package today. I mentioned Teacher Appreciation Week is next week, and for the fifth year in a row, our board has approved my recommendation to increase the local teacher supplement. And so we'll be adding $1,000 to the local teacher supplement starting in July. And so excited about that. What that'll do is every teacher in our district will now have at least a $7,700 supplement. And those that have 20 or years more experience, they'll be over $8,000 for a local supplement this year. So it's because of...
It's because of being conservative with spending all year that we can do that. And that's our goal, is to continue to increase the local teacher supplement. I know we've got a lot of teachers, I noticed, here today, and so just want them to know that we appreciate all you do, and that we, we want to continue to increase that. Also, we have completed the principal hiring process, and we had 27 applicants this year. All of those applicants were within DeSoto County schools, and we had a great pool of applicants. We have an amazing group of assistant principals, and we appreciate all of them who participated in that process. We are, our board just approved the hiring of six new principals, the newest principals in America, or in our, in our bits right here. And so at this time, though, I would like for you to meet our new principals. We are very, very excited about them, and I'll ask them to come up individually, just to share a little bit about themselves. And we'll start with the new principal at DeSoto Central Primary School. She is currently an assistant principal at Hernando Middle School, Jennifer Hodges.
Plea, thank you, Ms. Ruston, and members of the board. Thank you just doesn't seem sufficient. I am so grateful for this opportunity. 15 years ago, I hung up my hat as being career-level room mom, and decided I wanted to be a teacher's assistant. And I took a position for two years as a teacher's assistant at DeSoto Central Primary School. So this has just made a full circle for me. I am so thankful and cannot wait to meet everyone there and serve that community once again. Thank you. Also, I'm sorry, I forget something. Today I have with me my husband Kerry, and our daughter William, and Lala and Liz. Thank you.
Next up, we have our new principal at Hernando Elementary School. He is currently an assistant principal at Hernando Elementary School, that's Mr. Scott
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I appreciate you. Thank you, board, for being here tonight, for giving me the opportunity to step into this role. It started 20 years ago. I have taught just about every subject in education. I started at the elementary PE level. I knew right then that that was the level that I wanted to be at, in any place in the world. Like I said, I taught at every level, coached girls' basketball for 12 years. So I have enjoyed just about every side of education. And again, I appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to working with HES staff. I work with them right now. I know how awesome they are. They're going to continue to be awesome, with their son back there in the back somewhere. So I appreciate their support, too. Tonight, I have with my, with me my wife, Kim, our, two of our four kids, Alyssa, who is a teacher in Arkansas. We have Sophie over there at the end, who is a junior this year at Hernando High. We also have our daughter Savannah, who lives just north of St. Louis. She couldn't be here today, but hopefully she's on YouTube watching. And then Nicholas, our son, graduated from Hernando High School. And then I have my mother and father here as well. So again, I appreciate it. I look forward to the opportunity. I'm excited to get started, and it will start tomorrow.
Next up, we have the new principal at Hernando Intermediate School. Before I get to that, Hernando Intermediate School will be our fourth and fifth grade school, because the current Oak Grove will be moved into the current middle school, and will be renamed Hernando Intermediate School. And our new principal is currently an assistant principal of South Haven High School, that's Ms. Otter Warbar.
Thank you, Mr. Ustleton. Thank you, board. I'm really excited to be here, and thank you so much for this opportunity and being the world to me. I'm going to introduce my family, not get emotional. I have with me my husband, Brian, 30 years, my mom and dad, and my baby girl, Becca. She's a junior at Lake Cormorant. My four boys, my four sons, unfortunately could not be here, but they're all working. They couldn't get off of work, but they're being productive citizens. So that, very proud. So my educational journey started, as my daughter Becca would say, in the late 1900s. And so when it started back in the late 1900s, it actually started at a place called Hernando Middle School, where I did my student teaching. And so now, we talk about full circle. Now I'm coming back full circle, back into the building in which I started, and I, it couldn't be more special to me. I'm so excited to work with the teachers at Oak Grove. I look forward to moving forward, literally moving forward with them, and I just thank you all so much for this opportunity.
And today's up, we have Hope Sullivan Elementary School. The new principal is currently assistant principal of South Haven High School, it's Dr. Madifa Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Ustleton, and thank you, board. I am so very blessed and honored for the opportunity to lead Hope Sullivan Elementary School. I want to acknowledge my husband, Lee Wayne, who was here today to celebrate with me, and I want to also share that this is a full circle moment for me. When I moved to the DeSoto County area many years ago, my daughter attended Hope Sullivan Elementary. And a few years after that, my son also attended Hope Sullivan Elementary. I am very, very forward, very much looking forward to the upcoming school year. I expect it to be a great one. To those that are watching, teachers, I want to say, I look forward to partnering with you. Students, if you are watching, I look forward to supporting you. Parents, if you are watching, I look forward to connecting with you. Again, I am looking forward to a very good school year, a great school year. We are the hope.
Great, that's awesome. Next up, we have Oak Grove Central Elementary School. And going back to this, a little bit of a change, Oak Grove right now is a fourth and fifth grade school. But Oak Grove Central Elementary School in the fall will become a K1 school, and the new principal is currently an assistant principal of Lewisburg Primary, that's Ms. Jan Long.
I'm so honored to be back in Hernando Elementary, previously at Hernando Elementary. And I'm a graduate of Hernando High School, so I know what a wonderful community that we have here, and I'm so excited to have their support and trust. I'm so grateful for my family that's here today. I have my husband Bobby, my two sisters, Kelly Stansel and Candy Seale, and my mom, Candy Spartan, and my daughter, Charles Spartan. And I sent some wonderful friends back there, decided to stick around after they saw me here, and I am just thrilled to be here, and I can't wait to work with Mr. Nichols as we partner together and provide, continue to provide quality education to our youngest
Great. Next up, we have Pleasant Hill Elementary School, and the new principal is an assistant principal at Pleasant Hill Elementary School. That is Ms. Alice Doitt.
Thank you, Mr. Ustleton. Thank you, school board members. I'm here today with my husband, Jeff, my daughter, Anna Clear, and my son, Mason, who's a Pleasant Hill student. And my village in the back, and I know I have a village watching as well. I cannot even fully explain, try not to get upset, what this means to me. Six years ago, I received a call, two days before we were to report for a new school year, that said, hey, we need to move you to Pleasant Hill Elementary. And, you know, you're invested when you're in a school, and so it was a bit of a shock. I did not know that, number one, God and Mr. Ustleton and the board knew better than I did, when I came here. And it was Pleasant Hill Elementary, and I can't, I just can't tell you what this means to me, what it means to our staff. Ms. McGee, I'm so honored to get to continue the work. Thank you. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate this.
I felt like the whole time I was smiling like a proud papa of your liking, our new principal, that you could tell, I've met with each one of them individually this morning to talk about their new assignment, and just to see their enthusiasm, how excited they are to be working with our students, our teachers and staff, and our parents, and I'm just excited about seeing them in action, seeing all of the they do. Also, and I don't want to miss anybody who's here, but I know Ms. McGee and Ms. Purtle and Ms. Striplit are in attendance, and I want to thank them for all of their hard work. Please give them a round. I appreciate you sticking around to support them, and I know that you'll support them during this transition also. They were very excited today. And also, Mr. McKinnney and Ms. Wamboldt, I don't believe are here, but I want to thank them for all of their hard work, and they're doing the same thing, helping during this transition. So a lot of exciting things going on. Once again, we're excited to see our new principal in action. I know all of them are going to do such a great job. Thank you so much. And that concludes my second superintendent.
That was a great second superintendent. With that being said, I need a motion to consider a, or consideration, a closed session to determine whether the board would enter into executive session with the following matters, student discipline matters, and a potential litigation matter. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing, anybody voting no? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Chase will come back to inform me whether we stay in executive session. The next scheduled board meeting is Thursday, May 15th, at 10:00 AM. Thank y'all.
Yeah. I know. Thank you. I'm glad. I'm glad.